All right, this special city council meeting workshop is called to order.
I've seen no, no public comments.
Public comments, anybody, nothing? All right. We're gonna have a presentation from Brad Gordon, our state municipal marketing manager for Waste Connections. Come on the front, sir.
I'll pass it over until you run out.
I'm kinda, I think, uh, this magazine has now to be just kind of an overview of the presentation. I'll keep it relatively short if it's, you know, I've been told earlier, so.
There's a trap door.
Understand, understand. Again, I'm Brad Gordon, well, with Waste Connections. Uh, I'm the municipal manager here in Oklahoma. I'm happy to be here and talk to you a little bit about recycling. Um, some of the stuff we're doing in other parts of the state, um, with a program called Recycle Bank, that, uh, we feel is a really good program that, that brings some opportunities back to the residents by recycling, maybe not in a straight monetary form, monetary form, but in, you know, a rewards program similar to what you would have with your credit card. So, on the first slide here, um, you see, you know, greater average of participation by using our Recycle Bank Rewards Program. Um, you know, you can earn rewards, earn hundreds, hundreds of dollars in reward points, um, per year. Um, that kinda helps, you know, take the sting out of the, you know, the dollars that we have to have for the actual program. Obviously, Green the Planet, which is a great thing to do, Build Community, um, you know, that everybody kinda does it together and, you know, it's, you're earning points as a community-based, you know, program. Um, obviously, Reduce Land, you know, landfill waste, which is, you know, conscious in, you know, businesses, you know, all, all over the United States. Uh, and then also, you know, reaching the state goal, the ODQ, passed legislation, I guess in 2009, I believe it was, um, for communities over 5,000, um, to by 2011, they wanna have 10% of their waste, um, you know, diverted from landfill. So, um, that was up for discussion again in the latest legislative session. Um, I think there was actually a vote on that, but I'm not, I'm not sure on that, I haven't seen the last, you know, outcome on that yet, um, to increase that percentage. And that's just the goal of the state of Oklahoma. And then, most importantly, I believe, is bring money to our local businesses. Um, these rewards would be on a local base as well as a regional and national chain level, but there is, you know, ways to track the money that we're bringing back to our local economy by, by doing that. Um, on the next slide here, you'll see, um, our program has three basic steps, and it's really simple. It's recycle, and we record the weight, and then we reward the points based on the weight of the community, based on the number of people that participated that day. So, you know, if you had 50 people set their recycled containers out, and you had, you know, 100 pounds, then, you know, you, those 50 people get a point apiece, or, you know, get a pound apiece, which would, you know, equate into, you know, how many points you would get off of that. Um, on the next slide, you'll see our automated system. It's very similar to what we do here now. There's no, you know, nobody on the truck that's actually, you know, pushing the containers to the side. Um, you know, it helps with the safety of our people, the guy does everything from inside the truck. Um, and it records the weight, or it records the can based on RFID tag that scan when the arm actually grabs the container and picks it up. So it records who has the recycled out, recycles out on that day. Next slide here, some things we do to kinda get the program started. Um, you know, we provide educational materials, um, you know, do some town hall meetings, um, let people know first how, what they can recycle, um, and what they cannot, and then obviously how to sign up, how to, you know, redeem your points, um, and how to, you know, transition smoothly into the program. On slide five there, that's just a kind of a cart label, this is, goes back to kinda education. Um, you know, glass bottles, aluminum cans, tin cans, um, most of the things you would, that most of us know a little bit about. Um, that you can recycle, your plastics, your food boxes, all your junk mail. And once you really get into the program, once you really get into the program, you really start to understand. We've seen people everywhere say, "Whoa, I had no idea that I had this much that I could actually divert from our trash." Um, so, you know, like I said, there's very, actually very little, I mean styrofoam, electronics, ceramics, and dishes. You know, food waste is, is, I guess, probably the biggest thing that you have on the things that we can't recycle. Um, you know, but a majority of your everyday trash is gonna fall into one of those categories where we can't.
Tell them a question real quick, so it all goes in one, uh, poly cart?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's not, earlier, I guess in the early stages when people started recycling, you'd see where you had bins. It had five to six bins, maybe 18-gallon bins. And it was, I mean, it was cumbersome, nobody wanted to do it because it was a pain. I mean, you know, you have to talk, you have to tote five cans to the street every, you know, Wednesday or whatever. Then, you know, it becomes a hassle, and then you have to take room in your house to have those cans. And this is, all goes into one thing, we take it to a, you know, a MRF and sort it.
Now, are they always gonna be blue? Do you do green ones?
Um, yeah, we could do, I mean, we-
I've heard complaints about the green ones, we've heard green ones, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can do-
I mean, I've heard green ones, I mean, so we'd like to have them green.
Yeah, yeah. What we usually do is we differentiate the cans by their, you know, usually, I mean, we can do them green and have like a different color lid. Like, a lot of ours have a goldish color lid, they're green, we kind of look, just so you know, you know, which is which. Um, it'd be kinda hard on us actually to have two blues at the curb because, you know, somebody, you know, gets one dumped and it's not supposed to get dumped, and, you know, so, that, okay, sorry. Uh, the Recycle Bank Experience, um, on the next page here, just kinda talks a little bit, I mean, it's just kind of a snapshot of the webpage of what you can do, check your points balance, shop for your rewards, um, you know, social media, they have Twitter feed, things like that, that they, you know, sit down for participants if they wanna register for that. Um, on the next page, you see the personal account, it shows your point balance, um, you know, and how you got your points. One thing neat about this is it's not only your recycle, you can go in there and do surveys. Um, this is really very similar to like a frequent flyer program, um, or something like that, or a credit card rewards program that you can go on, and their main goal is a marketing thing to, you know, do surveys and things like this that just partnered with us to help, you know, get some of that information. Uh, so you can earn lots of points doing that. Um, on the next slide here, shop for rewards, you can obviously sort your, you know, um, what you're looking for, food, drink, you know, apparel, things like that. Um, and you can also, you know, do it obviously on your account balance, and see what you, what you're able to, you know, get. Um, one minute, I'm gonna skip ahead just a little bit then. Um, I guess, receive rewards promptly, obviously, you know, within a week, they're usually in your account. Um, on the next couple slides, you'll see a small sample of our reward partners. And, you know, there are some bigger chains, there's some regional chains, but one thing they do, Recycle Bank does, is they come in and they'll sign up local businesses. That's the, that's one of the things, they come in and try to partner with the local businesses to make sure that those guys are really the ones receiving the benefits that, you know, have a, you know, a leg up on the competition when it comes to things like that. Um, and then here on the participation, you can see kind of the participation totals. This was actually done for Chickasha, um, you know, they're, they're at about a 64% participation rate in Chickasha with, um, 52, over 5,200 shows. So, and they've only been doing the programs since September. So, very good, you know, participation rate as far as that goes and stuff like that. And then, um, there's one that was really important, I wanted, well, the weight tracking. Chickasha has diverted over 1,202 million ton, uh, pounds since they started this program in September. So, yes.
Yeah, it's related to my question, so, the incentive to do something like this is to lengthen the line for landfill example? At least for you guys. Now, we don't own a landfill anymore, so will that change at all? Like, uh, will we get a better deal because we give you, we divert less trash to the landfill, or?
Well, not necessarily, no, I mean, it's, recycling is fairly expensive to do because it's hard, especially in a single stream, the way we're doing it. The, the material's separated, have a value, but there's so much, it's labor intensive to separate those, you know, commodities out. So, yeah, we're, we're saving on that end, but we're really just saving the space, is what we're doing. You know, we're not, we're not making a lot of money off the commodity, you know, that we're, that we're pulling out. Um, so, no, there's, I mean, there's not really a savings there, um, you know, as far as, you know, to the end user, but, you know, it's more of the, the right thing to do, I mean, and, you know, it's saving space. Um, because, you know, if, if our landfill, you know, fills up in, you know, five years, and, you know, we're still picking up trash in the city of Guthrie, then our next landfill may not be at the same rates. You know, there may be, it may not be an immediate savings, but there may be a savings down the road to say, okay, well, you know, we extended life of this landfill 10 years, so we're not having to pay double the disposal rates to open a new one.
Your last final important slide.
Yes, sir. Um, this is on the redemption activity, um, with West Texas Chickasha. And just since September, we have bought, we have brought in, what is it, about, almost $11, or almost $10,000 in co-spin and money saved. So the, the residents have actually saved about $4,000 during the program since September. They've actually spent almost $6,000 in the local economy. But that is lowered because all we can do is take, say, they have a $5 off a $20, you know, $5 off a $20 bill or whatever. Anything they spend over that $15, we don't know. So it's, we feel that's lower than it actually is. So, you know, just in that, that short a time, in a new program, we're already, you know, bringing a significant amount back into the community.
All right, so bottom line, we pay you to do this.
Yes, sir.
You make tons of money, you give us a little bit back.
Well, I mean, we're not making tons of money. Uh, I mean, we're, we still have the cost that we have to pick up the trash, just like we do your recycle. The only thing we lose the cost on is the disposal side.
And you recycle, then you sell the recyclable stuff to whoever gets it, that kinda deal?
Or we pay them to take it a lot of times.
Like on glass.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the minimum anticipation that you guys need to have?
Um, we would really ask that if we, if we did it, we would make it a, you know, across the board, a mandatory, you know, thing. Because you just can't, I mean, if you, if you make it a, if you want to, we'll end up, you know, we'll have no way to have a fixed cost to build operationally, you know.
And the monthly fee?
We're not certain yet, we, we think it's gonna be around $5, uh, probably less than $5, um, but that's close.
One quick question.
Yes, absolutely.
Do all recyclables need to be cleaned before you accept them?
No, well, you don't have to wash out your bottles, I mean, you know, we'd like you to pour them out, obviously.
Right.
But if, there's a, you know, a little bit, a pizza box with a little bit of pizza waste on, or, you know, pizza left on it, it's not a big deal. Um, there's a contamination, you know, percentage that, you know, once you get to that, then it becomes an issue, but it, it would have to be, you know, fairly large.
You know, we did this, what, two, three years ago?
Yes.
How is this any different than then?
It's not a lot.
Your go, your nothing, whatever?
It's not a lot at all.
Okay.
But I, but I understand you to say that you count the number of participants on a given day, and you track them, but you don't weigh the individual cans, it's total divided between those participants?
Yes, it's, it's the total weight divided by the total number picked up, and then we award the points based on who was registered that we picked up. So, it's a, it's pretty much a pound per home, and if you participated, you get your pound per home, you know, average.
Now, last time, uh, I mean, there was excitement, people wanted to do it, we had a first meeting, and then we let people know that it would cost money, then the second meeting, it was irate, you know, trick out time. So, um, one of the, kinda the outcomes of that, we said that there would be exceptions, that there were people who could get out of that system, but there's some people over there that buy, they're not gonna do that program. So I really don't, I'm a little worried about saying, well, it's gotta be 100% comprehensive just because you're gonna have people who are gonna fight it no matter what. So, I mean, I hope you're flexible on that end because there's no way, I don't see us moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that.
You guys had exceptions last time, if nothing's changed, then you could do it again.
Well, I think we did, I don't think we had exceptions last time.
There are cities in Oklahoma that, where the councils decided, let's say that y'all would pay for, 'cause you think about it, per month, it's gonna cost $17,000 at $5 for their 3,400 customers. So it's $17,000 a month is what we're gonna end up, um, paying, but taking that from the customers. Um, one city, um, I can't remember which city, maybe Sand Springs or Chickasha, where the council said, "We're gonna allow 100 residents based upon their income, based upon something that the city picks up the tab," and it was a, like a first come, first serve application and, and grant maybe 100. I, I will caution us, I was in the recycling business for three years, if you don't do it mandatory, it will not be successful. It will not be successful. Um, if, if, you'll end up taking it away, then bringing it back, and if you've just gotta pull the trigger and do it all, or not do it all. The only thing I would say is maybe we could look at, you know, subsidizing 100. But that even gets even trickier and very political.
And we've, I mean, like I said, we've done it in a number of other locations that we've had the same concerns. I mean, it's a legitimate concern, absolutely.
It just, and I am only bringing it because it was brought up last time, I'm not making this up at all.
Yeah, I do recall, there was an off.
Because people, it came up and they were just irate, or they'd throw stuff at the lady who did the presenting, and they were actually pretty mean about it.
Sure.
That's why you're here and she's not.
Exactly. Next thing, I'll wear a helmet.
Just kidding.
No, I understand. But, um, you know, it is a legitimate concern, but, like, like I said, if you go into it and you start doing that thing, all of a sudden, we've got 50% that, you know, say, "Well, I don't want it."
And then you take it away.
Any last questions from anyone else?
Is it impossible to have the option where you check a box and you donate an extra $3 to $5 on your bill to pay for somebody else? You should, you, via ordinance, you sure could do that. I don't know what our success rate would be, but you could, sure.
You could help your neighbor, yeah.
Yeah.
We could look at that, that's not be that good.
Some people may be willing to do that, to get it. I'd love to have recycling, sure, I'd be too.
I think you can donate these points to your schools, too, if you want, to help them. Brad, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. That's something we're gonna have to read up on and look at because, you know, we're gonna be talking about it some more. Uh, next, number three, discussion on the 2014 strategic plan.
In summary of our meeting in, in June, uh, this is what council came up with during the retreat to take a look at really what, what were the accomplishments from the last retreat, and then what were, um, the goals over the next, for 2014. As we were preparing to, uh, preparing a budget, this was important to have the retreat to see if there were items in there that we needed to tie into that budget. Um, so I won't read it to you, basically, whenever the 12, 2012 accomplishments, next goals were, um, addressing long-term infrastructure, looking at expansion of passenger rail efforts that impact Guthrie, operate the city with financial efficiency and integrity, um, and revitalize neighborhoods, and focus on the aesthetic value of our community. Um, and the last one, to create and sustain a comprehensive ongoing capital improvement system, such as GAPS. Um, so if y'all had the opportunity to take a look through that, if there's, uh, anything that you want to change, anything if you want to edit, I do not anticipate printing these in the kind of trifolds like we've done in the past, really because of that cost, but we wanna get this out and educate through our efforts and transparency to show the community that these are the goals of the council for 2014.
Put on the website?
Put on the website, we'll put it in the city, uh, the newsletter that reaches 3,800 customers, et cetera. Facebook, MySpace, no, we don't do MySpace, we could tweet it. Oh, not enough characters. We could have you all do a video on GTV20, and you could each take a goal, and, and you could do a dance and a song. We like to do it through choreographed dance.
We will be looking for a new city manager. Are you through tonight?
I'm done. It's good to meet y'all. So, any questions, comments, edits, cheers?
Anything for sure, you're listening now, or you?
Go for it, sir. Thank you, yes ma'am, I sure will.
Item number four, discussion regarding agenda items. Anybody have any, where you wanna start? Anything that's taken from council?
There's a few big ones.
Item four.
Sorry, sorry, and that is on the, um, the-
Yeah, which works.
Yes. So, on the, on the note, would we introduce, who would you like to speak on that? John, you gonna do it? John's here.
I'll talk, yes.
John, come sit in the hot seat.
Well, hey.
Trap door.
First time for everything, is right.
Go too long. So if y'all remember John from our retreat, um, what we did at the retreat, because we had such a, a short window of opportunity and the effort to, uh, to basically take two potential loans that we wanted to do, put them together to avoid costs for going out for those loans. OWRV sent us a letter, oh, I wanna say second week of June, we had a very short time to turn that around, and what we're doing is refinancing, uh, the Langston water line in an effort to save some dollars. So I'll have John talk a little bit about that bid process, what we went through to, um, to get the numbers that we got today.
Okay. I will do, go through this somewhat quickly, uh, but, um, last time we talked at a council retreat, most of you were at that retreat, then we were looking at what the board had offered as far as, uh, potential savings to the, to the authority. And at that time, we felt that where the market was, I think that was like the 28th of June, on a Friday.
21st?
17, 21st?
We don't know, we have no idea.
It doesn't matter, it's June 21st.
Since then, we submitted packages, and I passed out a handout, I will not be at the, orally, my, uh, certainly will, in my stead, will be able to answer any questions that you have at your meeting, but I will not be able to attend. The, um, we sent out packages to about a dozen different banks, including all your local banks, and to area banks, and then some national banks. And at the time that I talked to you, because I think it's important, as council, you say, "All right, John, you told us this so many weeks ago, what happened against what you told us at our council retreat?" At that point in time, we were looking at doing a couple of things, is looking at taking out the existing, uh, with the Water Resources Board, while at the same time also looking at doing a, uh, AMR project at about $1.2 million. And the, uh, and looking at combining that refunding and the new money piece, we-
Sorry, hey, sorry.
We put out a package for $2,975,000. And we sent that out to, uh, like I said, a dozen different banks, received a low interest rate quote on, um, we actually received a low interest rate quote at 2.76%, versus a, uh, 2.85% from BOK, and up on the State Bank, we received a 3.95%. This is gonna be presented at the, at the council, uh, in the authority meetings, but we received three bids. And like I said, out of sending out to a dozen different banks. What I had shown you back at the council retreat was a 2.6% interest rate. The next page is a US Treasury bond, 10-year Treasury bond, which is what most, uh, most of the time that, in looking at pricing, where the tax exempt market is, and you can almost use the 10-year Treasury to, uh, in order for you to determine, um, you know, how, how you stood versus where we were at. And I, yeah, what's the 21st, where we were at the end, when we spoke on the 21st, we, the 10-year Treasury was about a 2.41. It's actually gone up about 16 basis points since then. It actually peaked on July 5th at a 2.73, and, uh, we ended up yesterday at business close at a 2.57. So it was up about 16 basis points. Ironically, I promise you, I didn't plug this, we, our rate was 16 basis points higher than what I was projecting at a 2.60 back in-
You're good.
So, um, but, yeah, it's amazing. I control the war.
That's not true.
Retract that, retract that. But it's important to understand that what we wanted to do was to achieve the, you know, the most, uh, economical option for the authority, and trying to send it out, obviously, to all your local banks, and, uh, and to the state and national banks. And based on that, like I said, we received a low interest rate bid from BBNT out of North Carolina. And those bids all came in today at 1:00, came into City Hall, and were tabulated here. And then we prepared this analysis for you to look at tonight. Page three, and I'll stop at page three, because everything else is just detailed. They actually bid themselves, the actual payment schedules, based on those respective bids from the three different banks. But if you can recall, this is the same sheet, the same format that I showed you back on the 21st. And, and looking at where we ended up at a 2.76, if you were to award to that bank at that interest rate level, then this is what the savings analysis would look like up in the upper right-hand corner of this handout. And what I, if you recall, what I showed to you before is if, back on June the 11th, the Water Resources Board estimated where potential savings might be, and they sent out a letter, and they said that, whatever that's gonna be, whenever we go to the market, they've still not gone out to market. They probably will market these bonds in August. But when I showed you those rates on June the 11th, 10 days later, that, the market's not where it was on June the 10th. And you can actually, you don't all have to do this, but you can, is that mine, can I shut up?
It's a wet one.
It's time to go.
Thank you.
So, um, you guys are just trying to rattle me.
You're supposed, you're supposed to answer that.
So, so, uh, based on where we were at that point in time, you know, rates have jumped up, and then on page two, the previous sheet, you have, you can kinda see where the 10-year Treasury was on June the 10th, when the Water Board kinda gave everyone an estimate of what their savings might be, to where, if you look at June 10th compared to where it is now, we're about 35 basis points higher than that. So, I believe that based on what was shown back on June the 10th, what I talked to you about on June the 21st, the fact that you received a bid of 2.76 on this term of 12 years, based on where the market is at today, that this is very representative, and obviously, you know, we would, our firm would suggest, you know, we would recommend later at the meeting to award to BBNT. And, um, what we were showing back on June the 21st was if you were to look at just addressing your AMR, where we were at a couple months ago, we knew this project was down the road, we knew that, that this would be a project that would cost X dollars, and it would be at X interest rate, so your payments would be, uh, you know, 110, 115, 120,000 dollars a year, depending on the term that you went out. We were able to accomplish both at the interest rate that was quoted today, the low interest rate, 2.76%. I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone has, I don't think everyone was a 10-year train, I don't believe was here, so.
I mean, I know, I've been, like yourself, watching 10-year Treasuries creep up. Like, I mean, and I'm not that you're prophesizing, looking forward, but, I mean, I don't see them coming back down. Like I said, it kinda stabilized and off of that.
Well, well, our concern is, you're looking at a 12-year loan at any other market except for the last four years. The 12-year financing, that this is a revenue financing, it's not like a general obligation bond where you have full faith and credit. Your typical rate's gonna be closer to 4% in most markets in the last couple, in the last 20 years. And so, at this point in time, it's our concern that in 75 days, 10-year Treasury went up 100 basis points. It went from a 1.65 to a 2.65. It went up 60%. Now, it's leveled off, fortunately, and provided that 10-year Treasury, uh, history, it's leveled off in the last week, uh, about 15 to 20 basis points, but, um, we don't believe it's gonna get anywhere close to where it was before. So, long story short, if you're going to borrow, and this was kind of a marriage of doing AMR and also taking out your, um, your debt with the Water Resources Board, but there's a key component that I forgot, and I'll shut up. On page one, if you were to have accepted the Water Resources Board offer, and I will tell you, if you, they sold the bonds today, your savings would probably be nil, just where the, the market is at today. It'd probably be zero. But if you were to have taken their offer, you could not call that debt for the rest of the maturity of that transaction. BBNT has been a callable on any payment date at a 101, which means they'll charge a 1% premium, but you can pay these, this debt off any semi-annual payment, interest or principal payment day. What that means to you, long story, is, once you install the AMR system, once it's onboard for a year or so, once you have a good feel of where you're at economically, if you're four, five, six years down the road, and you say, "Well, you know, I, we really wanted to keep this a little shorter term," you will have the option at that point in time, you're halfway through your maturity on a 12-year deal, you've got about a million and a half outstanding, for 15,000, you can pay it off, and you're done. You would not have had that option with the Water Resources Board, at least not until the, probably the last couple years of the- they would have, they're gonna have probably a seven to eight-year call on their deal. And so it would not have been advantageous for you two. And they, they've actually provided two call options, and one is, call any, any payment date at a 101, or you can do a part call, but it's not callable until 2019. And our office, as your financial advisor, would suggest that you would accept- And our office, as your financial advisor suggests, that you would accept a callable on any payment date with a 1% premium. Sorry, I took so much time.
And I want to clarify one thing that I've heard. The current rate is 3.5%.
Correct.
And we did have one, all Guthrie Banks were notified. We had one response from a Guthrie Bank that came in higher than the current rate at 3.95.
And there's a listing of everyone that we sent the package out to. I don't know if I mentioned that earlier, on the back of the...
Yeah.
And those are non-collapsives. We'll stick with that until maturity.
Anybody else on council have any questions? We are not doing creative finance and we're not churning an account. We are looking to save the city some money with this deal. Anything from anybody for it? Any questions?
Just to clarify, in the meeting, you will have to, because we didn't open bids until today, on the agenda, whenever an individual makes a motion to select the bidder, you'll have to say the name of...
BBNT.
Right. And the fair and lowest price on interest rate that we've seen is BBNT. So when y'all make that motion, just make that clear.
One other thing that's in the resolution, and if I make questions, we are looking to use Bank First as the trustee bank. There will be a trustee bank requirement on this loan as well as any of the prior loans. And I just wanted to make you all aware that we're suggesting that you work with Bank First and as opposed to your existing Bank of New York. I thought it was better for you to go local and in-state. And they are, they have a lot more involvement in Oklahoma by a long shot than Bank of New York. So we're suggesting that you change trustee banks and then we also...
You suggesting change trustees on this particular...
On this transaction? Well, we're looking at on this transaction and then potentially after this transaction is closed, I've talked with bond counsel, that we might look at switching all your accounts to Bank First.
Will there be some? Will Bank of New York create some?
They don't, yes, they will.
You have the ability under your existing agreements. Your bond deals have paid off, so now's kind of the opportunity that we can do that. You have the ability to change trustees. There's a notice period and with respect to your drinking water SRF loans that are still outstanding with the Water Resources Board, but that can occur. That doesn't have to happen at the exact same time as this closing, but we do need to take the action to give notice and move forward.
All right, thanks. And when you say Bank First, you mean the overall Bank First? You don't talk about the local?
Not the local, not, it's, they have their own trust department that specializes in this.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, we're still on number four, discussion regarding agenda items. Anything else?
There are a lengthy list of, there's three items about vendors, alcohol and suspension of some codes for the gentlemen of the road tour. So if you didn't thoroughly go through that packet, I know Renee would be thrilled to talk to you about that for six minutes. If there's, if there's questions specifically, I think one of the overall items that we've been, continue to be asked is how, what are we proposing to have open container for alcoholic beverages? We are proposing to you to go from, I'll get this right, Fifth Street to Ash and Noble, Noble to Vilas.
Including in Ramon's Park. If you looked at that map, that was on there. Are we still looking at that?
Yeah, that's what's on there.
That's on, Ramon Wells Park is on that map.
Okay, I had outlined the specific words. We can say, well, no, wait a second, because it does say historic district.
Yes.
Including, yes. You are correct. Yes. So, because the historic district is different than that CBD district, so those are different boundaries. So we just kind of overlaid as far as we thought that it would be appropriate.
Well, and I think one thing, you know, I've gotten some press from local folks about looking at this, not just for this event, but even in the future. And I think it's something that we need to look at as a body, how we move forward, you know, opening this up. Because it's pretty regulatory at this very moment, how we can encourage, because it's a, I mean, our downtown, not that word, but we're encouraging, you know, developing and that's a way for restaurants and businesses to do just that.
And one of the reasons we did it as a resolution also, one is to give it some oomph, but we can always, for any festival, go back, grab the resolution, change the name, bring it back to you. Or you could end up doing an ordinance that says city manager has the authority. You can, you can do it 100 different ways, but it's something that we hope to mimic.
Well, and I think we, I think we, I think we definitely need to take it under review looking forward, you know, because our community is, I mean, we're being known for it. I mean, maybe Guthrie, we're just another event that, you know, that we are developing this, this area and to take advantage, full advantage for our local businesses, we definitely need to...
So eventually, part of this needs to be permanent.
Well, I think we, I think we need to really look at it.
We need to have, we need to have probably a resolution that just triggers all of it automatically.
I mean, even though, yeah, this is a, yeah, exactly. I just think it's, you know, it needs to be looked at in depth.
Just re-adopted.
Because we, you know, we're getting a lot of push from local folks that want to be able to extrapolate this event. No, just this event, my future.
Do you want to go to 12th Street?
I'm just wondering if...
13.
Basically, it's a railroad track.
I live on the other side.
Yeah. We can take it to your house.
No, I was saying, I'm wondering how far you need to go. I don't know if 15th Street...
Basically, that's a railroad track.
That's going to be the walking path.
I'm just wondering if that's far enough for the, back up in the west and the north, there, there's quite a few empty blocks beyond 15th Street.
We indicated on this, that specific area along with the cottonwood flats, festival grounds.
That's all, I'm sorry. But I think it's important that we look at this in depth.
Another one that I don't want to be remiss on is we are suspending the solicitor, one of my solicitor permits. Here's, here's what, what some of us had talked about was that do we want, do we want people to drive into town and have a flag booth, a rug booth, a statue booth? You know, when you come into town, do you want it to look, do you want to open it up as a used goods, velvet Elvis? Yes, all of those items. And what we're urging individuals to do, and bless them for attempting to make money in their own town with their own dollars, I think that's great. What we don't, what we're trying to discourage is just lining up the streets with merchants. And what we're urging people to do is find a local business, ask them if you, if you really want to sell your Mary Kay or, you know, we're being approached with a lot of people that want to sell goods. What we, number one is go through the vendor process with, with the jam so that you're an official vendor or find a location that's already established. What we don't want to do is take away from our downtown merchants that are also established, they're paying rent, they're, they're in a location, they're stable, rather than having everybody show up with a laser lights and whatever, mustaches. I could go on and on listing goods, but, so that is one of them and that, that may be a little contentious. We wanted the city to look good and not look like a flea market driving into town. Any others that were kind of...
Any other?
We have also on another resolution, a list of items in the ordinances that we wanted to take a look at, making it a little bit easier for our downtown merchants. For example, those merchants that are located in the CBD comply with historic preservation ordinance in terms of what kind of things they can put in the windows, paint the windows, that kind of thing. We wanted to allow them to be really involved in that so that they can paint the windows, they can put banners out. They maybe, you know, they can go ahead and put signs that are a little larger than normal. So for this period, we would waive that. And by this period, I mean the Friday of the week before. So they have Friday, then all that week, and then those kinds of things have to come down the Monday.
So they got a whole week to get ready, prepare for it, and then they got time to clean it up afterwards.
That is correct.
Is that enough time to clean it up?
That is a timeframe that was suggested to me by one of the downtown merchants.
If they're happy to do it.
And, you know, to be real frank, we have one code enforcement officer.
He's going to be off at the...
And saying that, you know, if someone has hung a great banner that says, "Welcome to Guthrie," you know, I don't think we're going to pull down the hammer at Monday morning at 8:00 AM and say, "You must take it down or we're going to find you." I'm just going to throw that out there. That's not our intent.
Yeah. They just need to clean it up, get it done.
Sorry. Not the intent.
The potatoes in his...
We could do that.
And the whole purpose of all three of these basically is, we've had merchants call us, we've had community members call us. We're trying to open this up as much as possible to let everybody have a fair shot at everything they want. I think every council person's been talked to and contacted and city staff, and so we want to make it the best we can. Right, anything else on any agenda items?
I have a question on the resource officer at the school.
Yes.
I'm just trying to make clear, it says 32,000, 64,000. Are we paying, are they paying? Are we sharing the cost?
They, they're providing, they just voted, they just voted last night that they will subsidize $32,000 per officer. So they'll pay us 64,000 annually. So nine months out of the year, there's so many contract days that, that staff works for the school district. On the days that that individual is not working at the school district, we have them and I am proposing that at least one of them work code during the summer. And I don't know if Damon knows that or not, but...
I do.
Good, good, good. And we're just trying to do some efforts in code enforcement and so that would help us during the summer. We're not purchasing new vehicles. So I broke down a cost...
Well, we have currently one out there at our cost.
At our cost.
So they're going to now have two, but they're going to, additional plus, so there'll be three out there?
It's a total three.
A total three.
And they can designate where that officer goes. We're anticipating that it'd be two at the high school. Mike, you may know if they spoke about that at the...
Last night, they talked, I can't remember, but it was Guess.
I'm sorry.
It was Guess, I think, was in there, in their proposal last night.
Our birthday police chief informed me that I was misspoken, so yes, Guess and the high school.
The old man?
Two-year-old. Get her out of the chair.
He was, he was born in the 60s or 70s, or he's 60 or 70. I can't, I can't remember.
You know, we've had several discussions with Dr. Simpson at the school and basically, these two SROs are going to be in charge of multiple sites. You know, one at the high school is going to have the upper elementary school as well. One at the junior high will probably have Codrell or Central and Codrell. And Officer Gibbs is going to basically, you know, be the supervisor for those two field training officers, since he's done now for several years, that's his passion. And he's also going to, you know, take on the responsibilities at other schools. You know, the advantage of keeping Gibbs involved with this is he's really good at dealing with the kids and I think he'd be a good mentor for the officers that are getting started in that. And with us paying Gibbs his full salary, we can pull him out when we need him. With the guys that are going to be in the school system, we're not going to pull those guys unless it gets really bad. I mean, you know, because they are paying for those guys to be there. I mean, in the event we have a massive crash or anything, we can pull those guys temporarily, it's in the agreement, and send them back when we're done. And, you know, the last thing that we're going to do is pull those guys out of that school.
And we provide the vehicles?
We had anticipated downing three of our vehicles that are in pretty bad shape. The thing we'll do is, is take the best two out of three, because they're basically going to be just transportation from the police department to the school site and back. And we think the cost will be a minimum to maintain those since they're not out being...
Do they do bicycle stuff too?
Absolutely. I mean, we'd have to get them, you know, bike certified and stuff, there's a cost to go with that too.
Did I start your sentence if they can ride the bus, but that didn't, it didn't go over well.
That's true. Now, we're already down to what, we're at 21 officers? Reality, we're going to be kind of dedicating a couple officers. Is that going to be a concern?
Well, we're going to, basically what's going to happen is this is going to allow us to hire two extra positions.
Oh, okay.
You know, of course, the other three months out of the year, we're going to bear the burden of the cost for that, but we're going to be using them, you know, one's probably going to be down at the legs helping, you know, Anthony during the summer, because I don't know if you guys have seen the use that our legs are getting right now. It is unbelievable. So we could use more enforcement guys out there. And then also, we did talk about doing code enforcement, you know, during the summer months as well, so.
Well, that's good. I didn't catch that we're hiring, you know...
Yeah, we think it's a great win-win. We're excited that the school district approached us on this. It's something that we really want to do.
Definitely, definitely. Partnership. Now, you see this as a long-term deal too, right? I know it's only manually, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, the contract can only be done for a year, but I think that in today's society, this is going to be the norm anymore. You know, depending on years to come, they may come and say, you know, we really need to dedicate one at the junior high. The junior high is, you know, is a pretty active school for us. And that's kind of the age, if we can get in there and do some mentoring and stuff like that, it's going to help when they get to the high school. And Anthony spent the majority of his time at the junior high, you know, trying to be available to the kids and mentor them and make them feel self-worth and that's about all I can say.
So if we're going to add two officers, do we, do we need more added equipment?
That's figured into the cost.
Is it?
Yes. Got training and benefits and belts, boots, spurs.
I didn't put spurs in there. I did stink. Best belt.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Damon.
Last call for any agenda items.
Why do we have a 1980?
I am, I want to say that I, I should have negotiated that into my contract. Do you see the picture of the 1980 town car?
That should be your car last.
I'm upset because apparently the city manager at one time did drive that and I want to thank y'all for not offering that to me.
That was the last care we ever had.
It wasn't airport, it was a courtesy car. We could get it running and put it back at the airport, but I don't think that's the best idea. But it's a 1980 town car. It's a beauty. It doesn't run. I'd like to hear what of it.
What's the proper way of getting rid of that?
We have, we surplus it through our policy. Most likely to be scrapped.
So we'll give that Damon to blow up.
We have had a request though from the gentlemen of the road tour that they need